Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to freely participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, it should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee, and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings, and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the roll call for the City Council. Lord Provost.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Present.
Councillor Cudell.
Apologies from Councillor Cudell.
Thank you. Councillor Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening. Present.
Councillor Hunter.
Good evening. Present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Rendall.
Evening. I'm present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening. I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening. Present.
Councillor Ross. Councillor Ross.
I'm here.
Thank you. Bailey Sawyers.
Yes, I'm here.
Which is the year, basically, I suppose.
Councillor Short.
Yeah, I think so.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Well, we've been aware of the, say, the...
Thank you.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor McCready. Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
Present.
Councillor Mara.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey Scott. Councillor Hay.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
I'm here.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening. Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
And Councillor Murray.
I'm here.
That concludes the roll call for the City Council. Thank you.
Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening: Appointments: Leisure and Culture Dundee Board. This is a confidential item. Can it be dealt with in the usual way, noting declarations of interest from those members of Leisure and Culture Dundee?
Agreed.
Thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the City Council. The next committee is the Children and Families Services Committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Before we start, I think, Tracey, we have to do a roll call of the non-elected members. So if you could do that, that'd be great, please.
Okay, thank you. So can I check, Mrs McVain?
Present.
Thank you. I think I saw Mrs Lek.
I have seen Moira try and come in and out, so I don't know if she's having issues, but I have seen her try to come in.
Mr Chohane? I don't think is present. Mr Baxter? I'll mark him absent. I have apologies from Miss Barkley. Mrs Javid?
Here.
Thank you. Mr Anderson McGuinness? I'll mark him absent. Miss Ishak?
I'm here.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call for Children and Families, and I see Mrs Lek is trying to get in.
Okay, so thank you very much. So we'll just go on to the first item of business, please, Tracey.
Okay, so first of all, does anybody wish to declare an interest on any item in the agenda?
I'm not seeing anybody indicate, so I don't think we do.
In that case, that takes us on to item two: Provision of Free Period Products in Schools. This report is for noting.
Councillor Crookshank, you have your hand up.
Thank you, convener. I would like to welcome this report, and I would like to also pay thanks to Labour's Monica Lennon for championing this initiative and pursuing it through to Parliament until it becomes legislation. Being brought up in a family of six females, and also raising three females of my own, I'm well aware of the costs of the period products. And I suppose what would do, well, what this legislation will do for young people is beyond excellent, protecting children, young people's dignity, avoiding anxiety, embarrassment and stigma. So, yeah, I don't have anything negative to say about the report, convener. Thanks to the officers for bringing this forward.
No, and thank you, Councillor Crookshank, for your words. I think you're right, this is a really important piece of work, and I think as well, it's highlighted in the report, the kind of work that was done through lockdowns as well to ensure that young people could still access the products. I think that was really important, and a lot of credit to a lot of officers right across the council who helped deliver that. So I think certainly in part for committee, we should certainly be thanking all officers for the work through that period. I'm not seeing MDLs want to come in. Can this report be agreed?
Agreed.
Everybody's nodding, okay?
Thank you. That concludes the education part of the agenda for the external representatives.
Okay, so this is the point where external representatives can leave. However, I will be doing another item at the end of the agenda that you might want to stay for. So if you, obviously can't contribute to the next item, but if you want to stay for what comes next, you're free to do so.
Okay, thank you. So that takes us on to item three: Young Carers. You have a report before you.
Again, Councillor Crookshank, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, convener. Again, another welcome report. It's forward-looking, and it's great to see that we've gone from 65 young carers being identified to 400-plus carers being identified, and also having 31 young care, carer ambassadors, actors, volunteers to inform and continue towards approaches in every secondary school along carers, along the carer's and school staff. It's absolutely imperative that we continue this good work, and I look forward to seeing the next update. But this does demonstrate that it's working and that we're identifying more young carers. I dare say there's a few that have slipped through the net, but I know how hard it is being a carer after looking after my late mother-in-law, so I can only applaud the young people for stepping up to the mark and being young carers, for whoever it is within the family, whether it's a sibling, a grandparent, a parent. I think they do an excellent job, and it's great that they're being acknowledged and supported. Thank you.
No, again, thank you for your words, and you're absolutely right. I think it's something we should certainly recognise, a lot of this work that young carers do, and it's not easy, and I don't envy them for what they're doing, but it's absolutely right that we support them and give them as much help as we possibly can. Again, I'm looking to see if MDLs wishes to come in. If not, can this report be agreed?
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay, so that should have been the last item on the agenda. However, as you, most of you will be aware, tonight is Paul Clancy's last committee as executive director, and I think it's only right that we say a few words, and we've managed to give him a nice, easy night prior to this on committee. Not always, not always able to manage that, but certainly tonight we've given him an easy night for a send-off. But I think it's just appropriate, we take time to say a few words for Paul, who has been working in education in the city for quite a number of years. I won't give away how long, just to save him some embarrassment. But certainly on a personal note, I have certainly enjoyed working with him for certainly at least 12 years as deputy convener and then convener, and Paul has always been a great source of, someone I can go to, to speak to, to raise issues, and he's always been really helpful, but also has a great dedication for the young people in this city, and has worked his entire life to help deliver the best possible outcomes for young people. He will be a huge miss to the department, and certainly a huge miss to me as convener. When we met the press and we had a conversation with, sorry, I put myself on mute there, to discuss Paul's leaving, one of the things I said was that we do have a great team in children and families, but a great team needs to have a great leader, and we've certainly had that in Paul, who has been a great ambassador for the city and has worked really hard for the young people. I will certainly miss him as the director, and look forward to hearing about his retirement. I know he's got a few things planned, spending more time with family, trying to get more back involved with his music and a number of other things. So wish you all the best, Paul, and hope you enjoy your retirement. I see a couple of members want to come in, so I think, Bailey McPherson, you were first.
Thanks indeed, convener, and I completely concur with everything you've said. I mean, like others on the committee, I've known Paul a great many years, and I think everybody would agree that he's the most approachable and helpful of directors. And not only that, he's got a kindly manner, he genuinely cares, and I think that's to his great credit. He's without doubt universally respected, not just across our schools, this whole department, but throughout the council and also our partner organisations. So I am sure, speaking for everybody and saying, we wish Paul a very long and happy retirement, convener. Thank you.
No, thank you, Bailey Keenan, and the next person, sorry, Bailey McPherson, the next person I have is Bailey Keenan. Sorry, I get my Baileys mixed up there. Bailey Keenan.
Just to echo some of the words I'd like to wish Paul. I didn't do that noise, just to wish Paul all the best. However, I really want to wish him all the best, hope that he has a long, happy return, has many happy times spent with his family in retirement, and no doubt I'll see him while he's out walking or running, or whatever he does, as I catch him on a regular, taking his exercises occasionally, doing myself. But just to really wish him all the best and ensure that he has a great time, and, you know, all the best to his family as well. Cheers.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Councillor Crookshank, you're next to come in.
Thanks very much, convener. Just to echo the sentiments that everybody's expressing tonight, I mean, Paul, as has been said, is very approachable, he's very thoughtful, he's always been supportive of me in my role as Labour spokesperson, and it's been a pleasure to work with him, and I wish him all the best for the future. Thank you, Paul.
Bailey Scott, you're next to come in.
Thanks, convener. I just wanted to, like everyone else, pass on best wishes to Paul for his retirement, best wishes from the Conservative group. The role in Dundee hasn't been without its challenges, but Paul's always dealt with them head-on, particularly these past 22 months, and I've always been very grateful to him for the time he's spent with me to go over items and how quick he is in responding and personally dealing with any issues that I've raised with him, so I'm grateful for that. A couple of occasions, my brother's come home from weekends in Pitlochry to say that the entertainment, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't believe who the entertainment was, and it was Paul. And sometimes I've been tempted, when we've had meetings, to bring my own guitar along to the meetings for a jam session, but unfortunately, my guitar, for some reason, only makes horrible noises, whereas Paul is a great entertainer, and I'm sure he'll continue to do that in his retirement.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. Next person to come in is Councillor Murray.
Thank you, convener. Just to echo everything that's been said, although unlike Bailey Scott, I'll not offer to get my clarinet out to have a bit of a jam. As you'd say, convener, Paul's been doing this for a very long time. I think, I think I first met him in 1992-something. I won't say any worse than the age either of us, but in all that time, he's definitely had so much dedication to young people in this city, and I think every young person now adult owes him a great debt of gratitude. I'm sure he'll still be keeping busy, but I just wanted to wish him good luck in his retirement. I'm sure he'll be keeping busy. And just again, to echo what people have said, as both convener and now in opposition, Paul has been an excellent officer and will be very trummely missed. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councillor Murray. Councillor Alexander, you're next.
Thank you, convener. I paid good money to see Bailey Scott and Mr Clancy having a jam session. That sounds like a treat for the years. But in all seriousness, you know, Paul, I think, as we've heard from all the comments, displays a real warmth to everybody. He is professional all times, but more than anything else, you can tell he cares, and I think that's going to be the strongest thing that comes through my memories of working with Paul over the years, is that warmth, that strength of character, that genuine interest in seeing the best for young people in this city. And I just want to thank him, both as a parent and as a councillor, you know, thank him for all of his efforts over the years, because he leaves a very strong legacy, and of course there's more work to do, but I think we are better for his contribution to that. And also, can I say, Paul's excellent sense of humour always has, I think, cut through some of the difficulties sometimes in conversations that we might have, and having that ability to just speak to people on their own terms, I think, is a real rare talent. So thanks, Paul, and I wish your successor all the success in the world in taking up the new post as well with Audrey.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Alexander, and it's Mrs Lek is next.
Thank you, convener. Obviously, I've worked with Paul for many, many years on the other side, as it were, as well as since I was the Catholic Church rep on the Education Committee, or the Children and Families Committee as it's known now. On behalf of Bishop Stephen, I would just like to thank you, Paul, for the respect that you've always shown and the support, even when maybe at times I've challenged different things, you've always come back, you've always followed through everything, and it's been a pleasure working with you. I'm sure you'll have a great retirement. It's just wonderful, so enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Lek, and I will now give Paul the opportunity to respond.
Thanks very much, convener, and it's been a, it's been a great, I've had a great time, I'm not going to say too much. It's been a fantastic 37 years working in the city, worked with some great people, and the young people in appearance have been the best, actually. But certainly, the last few years as executive director, it's been just a privilege to be able to work with great colleagues across the council, and that includes the elected members, I think. And it wasn't a told-off, but David Martin once said to me, they're not colleagues, they're councillors, because when I would write them, I'd say, dear colleagues, he'd say that, you're actually better calling them councillors, but I think I retained the colleagues all the way to the end, because that's what I considered them. We're actually in this together, and I've actually been quite inspired working across the parties. I mean, there's obviously politics that are involved in things, and you can see that. But deep down in the hearts of every member of the Dundee City Council is the welfare and the best interest of the young people and the families in the city, and that comes through, and that's why it's been so great to work with you. So I'd like to thank you, Dundee City Council, for the opportunity you've given me over the last 37 years of building a career here and trying to give something back to a city that just means everything to me. I just love Dundee, and it's just been a privilege to work here with you, and with parties of every shade and the independent members as well, you've all been great fun to work with. And I remember Bailey Keenan saying to me, remember, it's sometimes before a difficult committee, he'd say, remember, it's not personal, it's not personal. I always knew when Kevin said that, he was going to have a good go at me, but he always says, remember, it's not personal. And it never was personal, and it's right that officers are subject to scrutiny, I think, to make sure that we're getting it right, just the same way that elected members are subject to scrutiny. So thank you for your support. I've been able to call upon you whenever I needed you, and I've spoken to members of all parties and sought advice over things that we're trying to do. You've always kept any confidence I've asked for, and it has been a real pleasure working with you. So I go into retirement, you know, looking forward to it, but as I said to Greg today on the phone, I'm really going to miss working with you at kind of close quarters, and I just wish you all the best for taking the city forward, because it's in really, really good hands, and thanks for everything that you do for Dundee. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much, Paul, and you will be absolutely missed, and certainly by me as convener. You've been a great tower of strength for me as well, so all the best on your retirement, but please don't be a stranger to any of us. And with that, I think that's the end of committee. Thanks very much.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everybody, and I think we'll just get started. Willie, over to you.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Councillor Dawson, I see your name there.
Yeah, convener, item number seven in relation to Leisure and Culture Dundee. I'll be the same for Christina and Charlie as well.
Okay, I'll take Leisure and Culture as it given, if that's okay. Councillor Malone and Councillor Roberts. I think I have Councillor Short as well.
Yep, that's a declaration on item 10, please, convener.
Okay, thank you. I'll have to have given my apologies for a start. I've actually got a chest infection, so I might disappear for a few coughing sessions, but hopefully not too many tonight. Can we move on, Willie, please?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Item two then, before you's demand response of transport, this has been placed on the agenda, the request of Bailey McPherson.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson, would you like to speak on this, please?
Thank you very much, convener. My item and the motion which I want to present, which I'm quite happy at this stage that officers circulate, is really on the back of the, in my view, not the view of everybody on this committee, but in my view, and certainly in fact, in relation to half the committee, because we had a tied vote on the issue relative to the withdrawal of the Bletherbus, which I don't think you would be a genius to work out that I was less than happy with that particular decision. Now, my concern in this is that there are citizens, mainly elderly and those with mobility difficulties, and we're not just talking about the previous users of the Bletherbus, which had very limited coverage across the city, and had very limited routes as well, even in areas where there was coverage, of which there was only coverage in Lochie Stoppeswell and part of the West End. I've long since had a concern that there's a need for the city, and I'm not, when I say the city, I'm not meaning just the City Council, but working with third sector and private sector partners to ensure that we do all we can to fill the gaps in the main bus services, because there are numerous, particularly elderly people who live across the city, who don't live immediately adjacent to a commercial bus service, or indeed one of our supported bus services, and can be left effectively high and dry, particularly those who live in streets where a walk uphill is necessary but not possible for them, given their own mobility or age. I did mention when the matter came up, when we had the previous debate, that a long time ago, and it was a long time ago, we did have a policy of looking towards demand response of transport, or what you might call community transport. Now, that's been successfully delivered in a number of towns and cities across the country. Aberdeen's a good example, and, but not the only. There are, there are many, and they come in different shapes and sizes. Some are delivered by the private sector, some by third sector, some by local authorities, and some by a combination thereof. I've tried to, I had a very useful, I have to say, and my thanks to Mr McNorton for that, I had a very useful discussion with the head of Sustainable Transport and Roads about this issue recently, and I have, I should say, written this motion in the most collegiate manner that I possibly can, because I, I think if we care about our older and less mobile residents, and I'm sure everybody on this council does, that we would look to try to do all we can to help them. And having discussed with Mr McNorton, and he's made clear to me that there have been discussions, or we're aware that there may be coming forward, the possibility of a commercial or third sector organisation looking again at the issue of a, for want of a better phrase, dial-a-bus arrangement. So the way I have written this, because I'm conscious that officers are aware of this, and this may well come forward in the next six months. Now, if that comes forward in a manner that helps to fill the gaps, then, you know, that's a great step forward. It may or may not happen. So the way in which I have written this motion tonight is to say that we would like officers to continue to engage with any partners, potential partners, from the third or private sector. But should such engagement not result in concrete proposals by mid-year, 31st of August 2022, we would then expect, and we're instructing tonight, if that doesn't come off, we would then be instructing officers to bring forward a report within the following six months, identifying gaps in commercial and supported bus network across Dundee, and making recommendations about the viability of the City Council leading such a demand response of transport solution, which it may do in partnership with others. Now, I should maybe also add, the Scottish Government on the 1st of September announced our Community Bus Fund. There's very little detail attached to that at this point in time, but the clue's in the name, and what I would also like, I've not put it in the motion, but I think it's self-evident that it would be a sensible thing to do, that I would really like officers to be engaging with Scottish Government on the detail of that, and whether or not that might be able to assist in the City Council moving this forward, as I say, perhaps in partnership with others. So as I say, my concern, we've recently had our Dundee Kindness exhibition in the city square, and a great thing it was, and it was good to see, I'm not going to name a particular person, I was particularly delighted to see as part of that, but at this time of year, and given the real challenges that the whole city, and indeed the country and the world have faced in the last 18-plus months, I think kindness is key, and I think what we can't have are older residents, residents with mobility difficulties effectively being left behind, because they don't happen to live that close to a commercial bus route. So I'm hoping that, I would be delighted if I had all party support, but that's up to other members of the committee, but I hope you can see where I'm coming from, because I'm very anxious to see that we improve the transport options for those who at the moment may be left behind. Thank you, convener.
No, thank you, Bailey McPherson, and thanks for putting the amendment out. I, or the motion, sorry, I've got no issue with the motion at all, to be completely honest with you, I totally agree with probably most of what you've said there, and I think the Community Bus Fund and the Transport Act and the progress in Transport Act 2019 is going to be an indicative way where we will go forward with this. As you said, it's in the name, Community Bus Fund. So there's a recognition that we have to provide facilities for and options for that, whether it be a municipal service or others, which has again got to be devolved and basically researched whether that could work or not. But I'll bring in Mr McNorton, if that's okay, just to give us some background and some information on that, if you're happy with that. Mr McNorton, please.
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you, Billy McPherson. I think you've summed up quite well. There is a private operator who is looking to reintroduce a service which previously was trialled that didn't work out in twenty twenty-two. And we're hopeful and positive that that will work out to provide a private DRT service. As you note, though, we don't have any control over that, so I think it's a fair and reasonable six-month period to see if that does establish. In terms of the Community Bus Fund, we have been liaising with Transport Scotland on when that part is, part of the Transport Scotland Act is going to be enabled. We don't have a date for that yet and we have been asking also for details of what it will consist of. Our expectation is that it should be able to fund things around community transport situations like demand responsive transport, and that is our expectation. The initial cost assessment that we've had a look at for the DRT assessment, based on having undertaken these previously, is around about twenty-five thousand pounds and that will include the consultation exercise. At the moment, we don't have an allocation for that study in the revenue budget, so we would wish to hold off until we've got confirmation from the Community Bus Fund that that is eligible to fund from that next year, so we can finance this work to undertake it. But other than that, I think your suggestion sounds reasonable and fair.
Thank you, Ewan. I think it's also fair to say that I'm sure the officers will be engaging with the Scottish Government and appropriate authorities to make sure we actually get as much as we can within that. With what Ewan has said there, Billy McPherson, and the gas at the cost, et cetera, is there a possibility we can actually look to amend paragraph four to allow for the feasibility to ensure that we can actually look to get money from the Community Bus Fund to enable this investigation and research into a community bus for the city?
I've absolutely no problem with that at all. I should say, very happy with your response to that, convener. I noticed there are a couple, I think three colleagues wanting to contribute as well. I'm happy with that and I'll waive my right to sum up, given the tone and content of the response. Thanks, convener.
Thank you very much. I'll bring in Councillor Duncan, please, and he's on the second.
Thanks, convener. Yeah, I mean, they were just a formal with second of the choir and also to say that, you know, as a bus user myself, I do appreciate that, you know, trying to encourage people to use public transport is a good thing for us all to be doing for the future of the city. And there's perhaps, you know, more than one way to actually go about providing, you know, a service to areas such as in my own ward, for example, and elsewhere, I'm sure. But I mean, the ever-growing Balgill Heights, Ferry Fields, Clearwater area of my ward has no bus division whatever at present, which somewhat goes against what we always talk about of twenty-minute communities and, you know, trying to encourage modal shift and suchlike. So I don't think there's a magic bullet, but I think that, you know, contained within Bailey McPherson's motion is a possibility, you know, that we might be able to do something positive as a council in future. So on that basis, I'm more than happy to second.
Thank you very much, Councillor Duncan. I don't know where Bailey Keenan came. I'll bring Bailey Keenan in, if that's okay.
Just, I would have also been prepared to adopt the motion or support the motion. I think that I probably would have liked to see more emphasis on a municipal bus service based on obviously the Scottish Government's view on that as well. I don't think that we made the right decision when we cut the bit of leather bus and, you know, perhaps a split vote, the way it happened, would have been better done on a cut of the cards than the convener's vote being used, but, you know, that's where we are. You know, I think that it is a service that we should have looked towards continuing with and looking for the level of information that I think this report that we're now agreeing seems to bring to the table. So I'm hoping that's the case and that we canvass the users and look for the individuals that need that additional service that supports what's going on within the city and that we can make a real difference moving forward. So I welcome the fact that Billy McPherson brought it forward and I'm more than happy to support it as you are.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I think again goes back to the Transport Act and making sure that we actually, as I said to Billy McPherson, if we can actually make sure we get our fair share of the Community Bus Fund to do a proper study to see what can be done. We do have a very good service within the city, within our own and Explore, but things could always be better. And I think we can all accept that we've got areas which we would like to be served. Councillor Hay, please. Councillor Hay.
You're on mute.
Can you off mute now? Is it, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
I completely agree with everything that Bailey McPherson said and he's quite right. We do need to support the elderly and ensure that we provide some sort of service and try and fill in as many of these gaps as we can. Now, coincidentally, I've actually been in touch with officers myself on behalf of the Conservative Group, and officers are looking at one or two suggestions I've made on that front as well. But I would like to thank officers for taking the time to speak to me and the Conservative Group will certainly be supporting Bailey McPherson's motion.
Thank you, Councillor Hay. Councillor McCree.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I mean, I agree with most of what's been said. I mean, I think Bailey McPherson was correct to talk about, you know, demand responsive transport as a policy that I think has been there for a long time. I'm just not, I think we seem to have forgotten about it and not implemented it, but as far as I can see, I'm not sure we ever rescinded it, but I mean, I think we should have been, we should be looking to develop forms of demand responsive transport in the city. If we're serious about modal shift, if we're serious about climate emergency, then, you know, we need to do these things. And I think that, you know, some of the things I would say, you know, I think that some of us, including yourself, convener, we're on a red London bus, which Explore were trialling on the Locky roads, and I know they'll be setting up their new electric buses in the next few weeks, and I look forward to that. But I mean, the red London bus that we were on was actually in the livery, although it's a red London bus, was in the livery of Hackney Community Transport, HCT. So I know, I know to, you know, we should watch our, you know, if we can change the, you know, change the mode of transport, we should walk before we can run on this. But, you know, we can see that in the city of London, there were, you know, there are basically a community transport scheme which developed from what we're talking about here, demand responsive transport, up to running, you know, what you might call the iconic red London bus service, which is what we were on in our wee trip up Locky Road a few months ago, convener. So I mean, I think there is scope there for us to do things, the scope I think is very important. And I think the council, there's an outstanding remit, although I know officers have given us a written briefing on it, but I think there's still an outstanding remit to bring back a report to committee around the implementation of the Transport Scotland Act twenty nineteen, because I think that's really important, because I think it is crucial that we do look at what we can do to make a difference. Because I think, you know, I know there's probably a bit of reticence from some about this, but, you know, every time we complain about a bus service being taken away or being less frequent or whatever, and you're right, convener, in large parts of Dundee, we've actually got quite a good bus service, but for people, some people who are of mobility difficulties, some people who are elderly, it's not always the best service. So, I mean, I think when we complain about that, the logic of that complaint is, you know, we should be looking at what are the possibilities of us setting up a municipal bus service? And I think that, you know, I think that's something that the twenty nineteen act allows us to do. I think it probably doesn't give us, doesn't clearly give us the necessary wherewithal to do it and we need to have a good, a very good look at how that happens. But I think on the whole, I think, you know, we absolutely need to develop demand responsive transport. We need to take the, we need to take the climate emergency seriously. We need to develop, you know, a transport system that meets the needs of as many people as possible in the city and that does link people up to what, you know, I think I described as a decent bus service for large parts of the city. But, you know, there are people who struggle to get to access to what you might call the sort of main services. And I think that's really important that we do that. So I'm really pleased to support this, pleased that it looks like it's going to go through. I think it's really important that we do make some progress on demand responsive transport. Thanks.
Well, thanks, Councillor McCree. As I said, I'm happy to go ahead with this. I think we truly agree with the slight change that paragraph four has said, and I think it's the right way to go. I think the demand responsive transport is a tool within the transport structure and it may be the fact that for our bus service, you won't need that. There's options out there. People might choose to walk and cycle more and do other things. So again, that's again, we'll go forward with that and I'm happy to see that's a cross-party agreement. So I'll take this as agreed. Great, thank you. Can we move on, Willie, please?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Item three, before use, moneyfield drive stop airport or you just agree the terms of the notes?
Simply a consultation was done and no objections were received and were approved on tenth of May this year, it was put forward. So everyone's agree with that? I think that's agreed. Thank you. Next, Willie, please.
Okay, thanks. Item four then is Dundee Development Plan Scheme, you just agree the proposals?
This item seeks approval of Dundee Development Plan Scheme for twenty twenty-one, fulfills a legislative requirement to produce an annual report and set out a proposed approach to keeping the Dundee Local Development Plan up to date. All right, I think I have Bailey Keenan first. Is that all right? Yes, it's Councillor McCree, but I think if, we'll go ahead, Billy, Bailey Keenan, you worked, all right, okay, you're in charge, go for him, the Labour Party, that is.
We don't have that level of hierarchy that you have with your boss.
No, no, not at all.
Anyway, I'm just wondering how officers will address some of the issues. I know that in some of the areas of the city, there's been fairly substantial developments that have come forward, that as councillors and councillors for areas of the city such as the ferry have went against the recommendation of officers, saying that we don't have the infrastructure to support that level of development of an area. So I'm wondering how officers will be taking the likes of that on board whilst they reshape the city plan? Because there is little point of there being something in there that we eventually vote down and lead to the potential of the council having to pay compensation while somebody takes on the council for that level of approval when it goes to a reporter.
Thank you. I'll bring in Mr Hamilton, please.
Thank you, convener. So this report, the Development Plan Scheme, sets out the approach that we intend to take to review the local development plan. And as part of that, we need to have regard to national planning policy. And you may be aware that was recently published a draft of National Planning Framework Four. And also, there's a widespread engagement with stakeholders, including community organisations, developers, key agencies. So there's a lot of discussion will go into the review of the local development plan. I think on the matters that Bailey Keenan has raised, National Planning Framework Four talks a lot about twenty-minute neighbourhoods. And I think that particular issue certainly relates to the infrastructure that is required to serve new developments that might be proposed through the local development plan. So it is a matter that is at the forefront of our minds as we commence that review, but there will be opportunities for a wide range of stakeholders to express views throughout that plan preparation process.
So.
Thanks, Mr Hamilton.
If I maybe have a supplementary on that, in relation then to taking into account a twenty-minute community and having many areas such as lift area that doesn't have what the councillors there at the moment consider to be a twenty-minute community and indeed the residents, because they don't have shops or pathways, they have lights. Do we think they would have to respectfully fit that as a council to overcome issues of other developments going in?
Mr Hamilton, would you like to come back?
Convener, I think as part of the work to review the local development plan and given the prominence of twenty-minute neighbourhoods as part of national policy, there will be a need to do an audit of communities across Dundee to try and identify areas where there may be deficiencies in terms of access to those services which should be within walking distance. I think that audit would then inform a policy approach that would seek to encourage the development of these uses within proximity of the communities which are currently less well-served. I think in terms of the Western Gateway, which Bailey Keenan specifically referred to, it's clearly a long-term development proposal and the demand for different elements of community infrastructure will increase as the number of houses increases. And it's not surprising that all of the community infrastructure that might be desirable in the long term is not available at the early stages of development, because some of it requires a commercial reality there to sustain. But that is slowly happening. I think there is now a shop within the Western Gateway, there's areas of open space. There was recently a study on active travel infrastructure within the West and there's a number of recommendations that have been identified as part of that study that we will work to deliver through the local development plan and through other mechanisms in the years ahead. But that audit of the whole city as part of the local development plan will identify other areas where there may be a need for further infrastructure and a policy or framework will be set to enable that to happen.
Nice, Mr Hamilton. I think it's a very good example with regards to saying shop and the active travel report and study has just been published quite recently, which the Western Gateway community actually took on board and very welcomed. So I think I just wish to show we actually do look at the areas on an ongoing basis. Councillor McCree, please.
Thanks very much, convener. A bit linked to that, can I ask you about section four point seven in the report? And I wonder when officers expect the Scottish Government to publish the new regulations and guidance associated with the twenty nineteen Planning Act? And also whether officers expect that that will make a significant difference to planning in Dundee?
Mr Hamilton.
So I think the indications from Scottish Government are that a draft of the regulations will be published very soon and those regulations will then be finalised by the summer of twenty twenty-two and that will set out the plan preparation process. There was a report that had been submitted to an earlier meeting of the City Development Committee that set out some of the changes under the Planning Act twenty nineteen. And some of those changes do relate to the approach to local development planning and indeed the matters to be covered as part of the local development plan. And I think as a consequence of those changes, there will be a different approach towards planning within the city. That would also reflect the visions of National Planning Framework Four, draft of which I referred to earlier, but it does talk as well as the twenty-minute neighbourhoods. There's, as you might expect, an increased emphasis on climate change and the contribution that the planning system can make to that. Planning for health and how we can ensure better health outcomes through the planning system, working in collaboration with other organisations. So I expect that the new local development plan will look quite different to the existing local development plan in the city.
Thank you.
I mean, that's very helpful. I think it's good to hear about the focus on climate change and health. I think that's, I think that's important. I think when we discussed it before, I was also suggesting that we want to have a focus on jobs and a realistic evaluation of, instead of just a number plucked out of the air, which we often see in planning applications for the number of jobs that will be forthcoming. But I'm sure officers have taken that one on board previously.
Good. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Councillor Murray, I think, so he's the hands.
Thanks, convener.
Did you?
Yeah. Thanks, convener. I just wondered whether the officers could say a little bit about how this might relate to the estate planning for education in the longer run, particularly relating to twenty-minute communities. I know that councillor Bailey Keenan already touched on the need to ensure that those services were in place, but I've often found that the rhetoric between around twenty-minute communities and sustainable communities that probably preceded that was slightly undermined by the process of continuous mergers, closures of schools, removal of those and, you know, the ever greater distances that young people have to travel to get to schools, but also the community cohesion that's lacking as a result of the facilities that are taken out of local communities.
Mr Hamilton, please.
Convener, there is regular dialogue that takes place between city development and job Convener, there is regular dialogue that takes place between city development and children and families colleagues that is looking at where new house building is proposed, both through the allocation of land within the local development plan and planning applications. That then is assessed against the existing roles and capacities of schools and their catchments. And quite quickly, we can identify areas where there may be issues that we need to consider in the future. That work will step up as part of the plan preparation process and particularly where we propose new residential development to ensure that adequate capacity does exist within schools. And where that might be an issue, then the developer contributions approach that we have to secure contributions from developers towards education would be set out. So it's a key part of the local development plan preparation process.
Thank you. Councilor Martin, you want to come back?
Nope. No, no, thanks, convier. That was sufficient. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No one else wishing to speak, so I can take that as agreed. Thank you. Willie, next, please.
Yeah, thanks, convier. Item five then before is the City Development Service Plan Progress Report. Your approval is requested.
This is a six monthly update of the City Development Service Plan, as said. Despite the obvious challenges we've had in pandemic, I'm pleased that progress has been made by the service with improvements across the majority of our performance indicators. There's also been major steps forward on key projects, including job creation, MCEP and the waterfront property rationalisation, the T City's regional deal. And the service also made steady progress and it turned into a financially sustainable position. Could you be with me a second? Billy McPherson, first, please.
Thanks, convier. And I can confirm that there's a lot of progress in challenging circumstances. I'm sure we would agree. I have a particular question for officers and it's really around what it says in relation to camper down on page 13 of the substantive page numbers. It indicates unsurprisingly that it's been harder to progress this in relation to obviously the challenges that everyone has faced in the last couple of years. The narrative also says that the department's continuing to promote the camper down offer, if you like. And I was just really wondering if officers could give an indication as to what actually is proactively happening at the moment? And how hopeful are they about progress in relation to this going forward?
Thank you. Mr Presswood, can you come back to this, please?
Yeah, many thanks, Bailey McPherson. I'm obviously restricted in terms of what I can say about live interest, but it's fair to say that per previous briefings to members, there are a number of avenues that we are exploring. I'd be more than happy to provide a separate briefing to the group leaders and the ward members or indeed to all members. And just giving an update on where those discussions are.
Very much welcome. I appreciate you know, how much you can say in committee, the commercial considerations, but I'd be very, very much welcome a briefing from Mr Presswood. So thanks, Mr Presswood and you, convener. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Counselor McCready, please.
Yeah, thanks very much. Can I draw attention to page 20 in the substantive report? The performance indicators about the proportion of operational buildings that are suitable for their current use or the proportion proportion of internal floor area of operational buildings in satisfactory condition. Given the recent problems that have been reported to committee and others that have reported tonight to committee. Are yourself and officers confident that the stats given in front of the report given in front of us is accurate? And also just in terms of the report we're about to get tonight, can I ask whether the Olympia is included in the proportion of buildings which are suitable for their current use in this report?
Bring Mr Presswood for this again, please.
Many thanks, councillor McCready. In terms of whether the indicator is accurate, I can confirm that it is accurate. And there are regular building condition surveys carried out by the building surveying team. And that forms part of this return. So yes, I have double checked these figures and they are correct. I'm not sure whether Mr Martin would want to come in specifically on the point, but Olympia will be included there. I can't at this stage say how it was categorised, but clearly there is an investment need as we will come on to in a moment, but not sure whether Mr Martin can pick up the specific point.
Thank you. Neil, are you there?
Thanks. I wouldn't have anything further to add than that at this stage.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks. I mean, it's good to hear. It's good to hear that there are regular surveys. I mean, I hope that they do pick up problems a bit more quickly in future, but thanks for the response.
Yeah, thank you. I see no other questions. So I'll take that as agreed. Yep, thank you. Next one, please, Willie.
Yeah, thanks, convier. Item six then before is the Laughing Road area extension to 20 mile an hour zone. Your approval is requested.
This is an extension to already planned 20 miles zone. Just for any, any objections? I'm sorry. I think councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convier. Certainly not an objection. I very much welcome this 20 mile per hour zone introduction. I think it's a good thing to do certainly with new builds and indeed I'd go further and say that I'd like to see it introduced in several other areas. Certainly at my ward, I'm sure other elected members would have areas in mind in their own wards, but I'm thinking in my ward of places like Balgillow Heights, Castle Park, so Balgillow Park, Panmuirfield. These are areas that are overwhelmingly or even exclusively residential. So my question to officers is really, is the council giving any active consideration to rolling out 20 mile per hour zones, perfectly enforceable ones to all these other sort of areas?
Thanks very much. And as we know, the team actually do an ongoing view of 20 mile hours zones across the city, which don't actually have them. And once they're TRO and they are enforceable by the police, so I'm quite comfortable with that. Mr McNorton, would you like to come back? And answer the question, please.
Yes, thank you, convier. And thank you councillor Duncan for the question. The, in answer, the objective is to move all appropriate roads in Dundee to 20 mile an hour. And that will include the vast majority of residential cul-de-sacs, including some of the ones you've mentioned. We are working through that. It's quite extensive. There is a lot of these. And again, if you want to email me any suggestions, we'll certainly add them into the mix and we'll be reporting those in September annually with the forward programme, five year programme for all 20 mile an hour zones that we're looking to take forward.
No, that's great. And be careful what you wish for, because I'll certainly email you. Okay, thanks.
They've all got their own list here, actually. Okay, thanks very much. I take this as agreed. Yeah, thank you. Can I move on, Willie, please?
Thanks, convier. Item seven then before is Olympia Closure and Refurbishment Works Programme. You're asked to give the recommendations.
Yeah, I think I have to say something on this one, actually. The reports are an up to date, update members on the current closure at Olympia and outlining the strategy to develop and carry out refurbishment and upgrade works within a planned closure programme during 2022. A tender report will be carried out to the works and will be brought back to the City Development Committee at the earliest possible date for members to consider. I know that elected members will share my frustration and that of the general public, that one of our main leisure facilities we're trying to close for such a long period of time. And elected members of all parties have had the opportunity for the detailed technical briefing from officers and I thank them for doing that. And we understand the challenges involved in the moving and ensure that Olympia is fit for the future. There will be technical investigations and they're ongoing to understand why the facility requires such a lengthy period of closure after less than 10 years of operation. But now is essential, we agree, an approach that ensures that the facility is back up and running as quickly as possible. And Billy McPherson, who's the fastest one there?
Thank you very much, convier. I have a couple of unrelated really questions. The first one's in relation to the use of other facilities, swimming facilities across the city. For particularly the public generally, but also the clubs. I asked to have circulated a video that Dundee City Aquatics had asked me to ensure when round elected members, which if any of you have viewed gives an indication as to the impact that the closure of Olympia will have on this excellent club. And they're not the only ones, as I'm sure we all appreciate. And I'm just really wondering how officers and particular leisure culture Dundee are looking to ensure that other facilities, and I'm thinking in particular of swimming facilities in our schools, Grove, Harris, St Paul's and so on. Could be utilised in terms of additional hours to try to make and meet that need.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Don't know if Robin wants to comment on that one first.
Yeah, I think in terms of the operational issues, I think Judy is on the call, so I'll perhaps ask her, because I know her team have been working closely with Mr Clancy's team to consider options for relocation of the swimming.
Yes, thanks for the. Thanks, convier, and thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. We are working very, very closely with children and families. Our priority from leisure and culture's perspective is to make sure that as far as we can we transfer services to the other facilities that we have across the city. And clearly with the exception of Lockheed, that does involve the school pools. We've had a very positive response in discussions with children and families representatives. And we are looking at the optimum times that we can cover, which involves early starts, both in the mornings and at night, and also looking at weekend cover. We've also asked for clarity on some of the schools, if there's any potential for access during this day that would help facilitate some of the clubs that we have. So I am hoping to arrange a meeting with the clubs affected. We was waiting for this meeting to take place before I went ahead and arranged that, but I'm in contact with the clubs.
Could I thank Mr Dobby for that? That's very helpful. You know, this is not a great place to be in. But I think everything that can be done to assist swimmers generally, but the clubs specifically would be much appreciated. And it'd be greatly appreciated if I and other members of the committee can be kept updated with progress on that. My second question's really around maintenance during the, what is it, nine year life of the current Olympia. Now, as it has been alluded to in the briefings, the previous Olympia had an annual closure for cyclical maintenance, which this Olympia seems to have lacked. It's also been put to me, and I'm not passing comment on it because I simply don't know, I'm just asking officers, that the use of particular chemicals has hastened the issue that's gone around the lighting. Now, I'd be just grateful if officers could indicate if there's any accuracy in the latter point. But also to look at, you know, has there been an impact from the, if you like, the lack of an annual closure? In, if you like, storing up these issues that have resulted in what will be frankly a closure for virtually all of 2022? And will in future there be an intention to have an annual closure to ensure that all maintenance is upgraded and done on an annual basis as necessary?
Yeah, thanks very much, Billy McPherson. I think that you touched upon the briefings themselves, which I think a number of elected members went to. There's a number of good questions raised and points given by the officers. And I think that should be clear that the detailed questions probably should have been asked then. But I'll put it onto Mr Martin to answer your question here.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, clearly there was annual maintenance done at the old Olympia. And my understanding was it was in relation to boiler servicing, which gave the opportunity for other items to be addressed. In terms of the new facility, it wasn't the intention to have annual maintenance, but the wood required to be maintained at periodic times within the life of that building. Not that that was specifically defined. In terms of the going forward, part of the works that we're going to be doing and engaging with specialist consultants is to understand as you speak about in terms of chemical dosing and suchlike, and look at a maintenance programme going forward. I wouldn't want to speculate whether that is an annual closure or is a periodic. It may be three, five year period. It may be a combination of both for a very short annual maintenance period and something longer. So I would anticipate that we'll have a developed programme to look at. And clearly that's something we'd want to share with all members in the public going forward in terms of expectations. Just picking up the point in terms of the chemical dosing, that may be a factor. But the likelihood is that there's a number of avenues that need to be looked at. And again, we'll take the advice from the specialists once we've had the surveys carried out. I have seen previous reports and in speaking to leisure and culture Dundee, the water quality and the type of dosing that has been used is a very good quality. And any change from that would be taken under specialist advice.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Obviously, I'm sure officers will keep us updated. If I could just make a a point about the point you made, councillor Flan convier, about raising questions. We're quite right to be raising questions in a public forum. The briefings are useful. We had a good discussion at the group leaders meeting. I know other members attended the various briefings that were laid on. But we have our responsibility in terms of transparency with the public to raise questions at this committee, which is in public. And I think I am quite right and other members are quite right in doing so. Thank you.
Convier, you're on mute if you're saying anything to anyone. You're on mute.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan, in Scotland. No, I agree with you, Billy McPherson. I'm quite happy to take your comments, sir. I think it's important though that we do have the briefings and we do get detailed questions out of the briefings and the opportunity to ask questions. What I would ask, we've got a number of elected members, as you just said, want to answer questions. We'll keep transparency, obviously. Is to try and get as many as we can in. Can we keep the questions as short as possible, please, to allow the officers to give you a full response as much as they can? Thank you. So councillor MacKervan, you're next, please.
Thanks, chair. I wholeheartedly agree with Bailey McPherson. From a briefing comes questions and when you leave the briefing, there's a lot more questions that come to you since the briefing to where we are tonight. Mine's is a similar subject matter, maintenance. I've been approached by various sources since being elected in 2017. And they've been saying there's been a significant backlog of maintenance issues that's existed for some years. And for me, that tells me there's a timeline of issues. And when I look at the report, it's light on timelines, very light on timelines. So my question to officers would be, what reports have been received from the building tenants on the significant maintenance? And what action's been taken to resolve these specific concerns? And for me, when?
Mr Presswood, you want to tell it or Mr Martin?
Yeah, no, I'll take that point and then I'll ask Neil to pick up the detail. I think it's important to emphasise that there's been considerable investment in the building over the years. There is typically around £200,000 spent per annum on maintenance. I think it's important that the narrative of the council not maintaining the building is challenged because that simply isn't the case. And in terms of the issues which have been raised, it's clear that these have been building up through a period of time. And over the past year, we have been in intense dialogue with leisure and culture Dundee about the scope of the works and about the best timing for the works, because clearly we require to ensure that the building is closed at the least damaging time for leisure and culture Dundee. So we've been planning the large scale planned maintenance works, which is set out in the report for a period of time. In terms of what is contained with them, it makes sense to minimise the number and length of the closures by ensuring that there's a group of projects all grouped together. And I'll ask Mr Martin to say a little bit more around what that group is in a moment. So if I can hand over to Neil.
Yeah, Neil, you want to come in, please?
Thanks, Robin. Thanks for the question, councillor MacKervan. Yeah, in terms of, there is, as Robin outlines, an accumulation of various items. And as the report suggests, in terms of the pool area, which is the critical public facing, there's elements in terms of superficial corrosion that has happened over a period of time. And one of the main items is in terms of the flume facility. But in other areas of the plant room and ancillary equipment in terms of mechanical and electrical pieces of plant, they may well have a lifetime of, in the region of 10 years. And clearly we're not there yet, but we're taking that opportunity to carry out these works while we've got this closure. On top of that, there are items that are general wear and tear, whether it's just double doors and some other modifications that can take place in ancillary areas around the reception and changing facilities. And I think it's worth pointing out as well. And I think it's worth pointing out as well that in terms of a leisure facility, and particularly Dundee, it is highly used over most days of the year. And it is an intense atmosphere in terms of the heating and the chemicals and suchlike that are used. So from our perspective, there's always going to be an expectation that you will have that wear and tear, which is greater than, say, in a school or a community centre. And that's really the basis of the works. I think another point to make as well is that we're taking the opportunity to work with Leisure and Culture. And there's a couple of items that are, there'll be new installations in terms of members' access so they can get ready access at different hours. So we are looking to work closely and maximise the opportunities for when it does open and the public are able to enjoy the facilities again.
Thanks, Neil. Do you want to come back on that, George?
Just quickly, Chair of a Can, to Neil, you mentioned there at the end about getting the public back. So again, I go back to the timeline issue. What are we talking here?
So in terms of the timeline for this closure, between now and, as the report outlines, first quarter 2022, there'll be further survey work, design work, liaising with the specialists. And then what we're going to be doing is obviously encompass that into a full tender package, get the prices back, come back to committee for members to digest that and hopefully approve. And then, once we get on site, we're in the region of a 45-week construction period for the works. So on that basis, you are in round terms looking at from now in the region of a year's closure.
Okay, thanks, Neil. I think going forward, I see Bailey Keenan has an amendment, as do I. So I think as we have a number of elected members that said want to speak, I think if we can get the amendments sent out to members, they can have a look at it whilst the questions are still being asked. Would that be okay, Billy? It's going to be a turn there, Billy.
Yes, we'll do that, Convena.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much. Could I have councillor Duncan next, please?
Thanks, Convena. Yeah, the briefings you mentioned were very useful. And what struck me, the one I attended and we've heard it mentioned tonight, is that there's actually several issues and factors at play. And we're not going to get like a definitive answer tonight, obviously. But what was on my mind, and I did raise it at the briefing, but I want to mention it tonight, is that insofar as any of the liability and blame can be traced back potentially, I mean, I don't know if it can be, but if it can be potentially traced back to the architects, the contractors, the design and build phase, then possibly that if we can apportion any liability there, that might save this council some money. So I'd really like assurances that that line of investigation is being vigorously pursued and that we will be updated if there's any possibility of perhaps pursuing any of these sort of organisations I mentioned for financial liability.
Yeah, thanks for that, councillor Duncan. I think that's probably quite clear, is what you said, it would be pursued if it was possible. Robin, do you want to come back on that one, please?
Yeah, I think just to emphasise, that's obviously an important question. It's one which officers across services have been reflecting on very considerably. I know that Mr Many has been reviewing this in detail and we've obviously been providing what knowledge we have of any potential avenues, but potentially hand over to Mr Many.
Thanks, Mr Presswood, and thank you councillor Duncan. Just to confirm that as elected members may be aware, I have delegated powers to raise legal proceedings in the council's name, where I believe it to be in the council's best interests. I will be reviewing the situation here with other officers. And if I believe that there is a stateable case for taking action against any of the contractors or subcontractors, then that's the course that I would adopt. I will clearly keep elected members advised of any developments in that regard, and I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks very much indeed, Mr Many. I mean, I'm certainly not a legal expert of your standing, but obviously, I am aware that some legal remedies may be subject to being time barred. So obviously, you know, keen that we, you know, any possibility is not lost to us.
Okay, thank you councillor Duncan. Bailey Wright, I think you're next.
Thank you, Convena. Obviously, this building's had a catalogue of issues since it was built. In fact, before it was built, there were questions asked of the design and the site. I thought the site was too small for the building, and I remember asking that question. We also knew that Eastport House had a small pool, well, a small lake relay, big enough to have a boat in the foundations. And bearing in mind, when it rains heavy, the water pours down the hill and Olympia is at the bottom of that hill. And it has to go somewhere, and the flooding has been a problem, and I'm sure it's been a problem there. And that might be some of the problems that you've had with the corrosion. But my question is, was the building signed off by all relevant council officers and officials when it was completed? And did the officials voice concerns about doing so? In my memory, I thought that might have been yes.
Well, I would have assumed the case would have been yes, but not being here at the time, I will ask Mr Presswood. I don't know if you have the answer to that, Alison.
Yeah, I think in terms of any propensity for the site to flood, I'm not aware of that having been a factor. But potentially, Mr Martin does have something to add on that. In terms of professional sign-off, I think we will obviously need to take that question away and just consider it. It is probably 10 years, nine to 10 years since any sign-offs would have taken place. So it'll take some time, I suspect, to ascertain that. But typically, there would be a number of approval paths, as well as client approval to be given. And I would not anticipate that the building would have opened if there was a failure for any one of the specialists to sign it off. But I think it's certainly worth the question that we should take away and just consider further, Bailey Wright.
Okay, thank you for that. It'll be interesting to hear what the answer is.
Well, thank you. You were probably getting on at the time, obviously, and you have a better idea of how the vote went that night with regards to approval or not on the build itself. Councillor Crookshank, I see you've got your hand up. I don't know where you came into the whip, so I'll bring you in now, if that's okay.
Thanks very much, Convena. I heard Judy saying that she's been in close talks with children and families. So my question is, and it's good that the various groups are going to be catered for, but what protection would be put in place for schools to ensure that education requirements of our young people is maintained in terms of their requirements to use the facilities? And also, what about the public and especially the elderly who, you know, are quite used to going to the Olympia early mornings and would find it an inconvenience, if you like, to be going out in the evenings? So I would like some assurance that there'll be public access as well, but out with the school teams.
I would assume that L and C have probably been raising the lack of members' membership anyway, but I'll ask Judy if she wants to come back on that one.
Thanks, Convena, and thanks for the question, councillor Crookshank. Yes, we're looking to do as much as we can in terms of all the activities that take place at Olympia in terms of trying to find alternative premises. It's not easy because of the size of the pools, space that we have at Olympia and what's available across the city. Your first question relating to disruption to pupils, we're not looking to cause disruption. And what we're actually asking schools is to identify times when they're not using it and looking at weekend use. Also, we've got Lockheed Pool, which we're really keen to encourage people to use as well and looking at the opening times of that facility as well. So we are looking at trying to make sure that there is public access alongside club access and the activities that Leisure and Culture run in terms of parent and toddler sessions and sessions for people during the day. I don't have the detail of that, but as soon as I've got confirmed what that's going to look like, I'll make sure that council has got sight of it.
Thanks for that, Judy.
Yeah, thanks, Judy. I think that'd be really helpful to keep us all updated in any progress that we've made with the communications with the schools, et cetera. So appreciate that. Councillor Malone, sorry for you waiting for so long.
No, that's okay, Convena. Thank you very much. It's an important matter, and I think it's really critical and vital that we have a full and frank discussion about this because of the cost to the public purse. I kind of understand where you were coming from, councillor Flanconvena, when you talked about the detailed technical questions. And this is a pretty detailed technical question, but it stems on from a question I did ask at the briefing session. I've been approached by a key stakeholder who suggested to me that there was evidence of, there was evidence of advanced corrosion as far back as 2017. I spoke at the briefing meeting and I talked about corrosion not being something that happens overnight. It's not a chaotic, it's chronic. And I actually asked about the interventions then. But I didn't realise that this is going, as something that was identified in 2017. So first, I would like officers to say confirm whether or not, as far back as 2017, we were aware of this corrosion and what planned activities have been around to intervene in those, in that erosion since that time.
Okay, thank you. Mr Martin, would you come back on that, please?
Sorry, just paused. I thought, are you coming in first, Robin? No?
Yeah, well, I was just going to come and say that it's important to emphasise that councillor Malone referred to it as advanced corrosion. This is not structural corrosion. It does not in any way damage the integrity of the building. It is cosmetic. And the reason that it requires to be replaced is that it clearly is damaging reputationally and affects the user's enjoyment of the facility, but it isn't structural corrosion. But in terms of the time scales, it wouldn't be a surprise to me that it dates back to 2017. And there would have been a longer-term view of maintenance. There would have been dialogue with Leisure and Culture Dundee about what the appropriate time to carry out the upgrading was. Because realistically, a closure period of, I'm not sure, 45 weeks was known at that time. But it's a significant closure period, so you want to minimise the number of times those closures take place rather than having repeated closure periods. But, Mr Martin, do you want to, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's absolutely fair. And, you know, as we've discussed, it's maybe not a technically complex issue and everybody can see it, but the answer and coming up with the right answer is technically complex. And we need to seek that specialist advice to ensure that we come up with the right conclusion and implement the correct action going forward.
Can I have a Can you, can I have a No, it was just to thank the officers for the feedback. And I feel a bit more reassured that there has been identification of corrosion and that there has been regular discussions, because that's what I understand from Robin Presswood. There has been regular correspondence and communication with Leisure and Culture Dundee around kind of looking at the issues and planning planned maintenance issues that arise from that. So I'm happy with that kind of reassurance I'm getting.
Okay, thanks councillor Malone. And I think it says everything in the report about the number of key factors with the environment, et cetera. So I think it's quite a serious issue with chemicals in the environment. Billy Scott, please.
Apologies. Thanks, Convena. I went to the briefing and also spoke to the chief executive about it. And from both of those, it wasn't clear to me what the inspection and maintenance regime has been in place up till now and whether if a more robust maintenance regime had been in place, some of the difficulties that we're encountering now would have been dealt with and wouldn't have resulted in a 45-week closure. And during the course of this meeting, we're starting to hear about things that have been done. And Mr Presswood, I think, mentioned that there's £200,000 a year spent on maintenance. Now, knowing that this is an issue of concern, that it's quite likely that the members would have brought up, it would have been helpful, I think, to have some of that background to what maintenance and checks have been done over the course of the life of the pool. And I noticed that the Labour motion, this amendment that's coming forward, does call for that historic information to be provided. And so I would be supporting that view for that to be done. But it would be useful to know if there had been any interventions up to now that may have picked up something earlier, which would have not resulted in this 45-week closure because it would have been attended to before now.
Thank you, Billy Scott. Neil, would you come back on that one?
Yeah, happy to. Thanks for the question, Bailey Scott. I think in terms of interventions, as we've discussed, because of the atmospheric conditions of a leisure centre, to actually say that if we'd had an intervention, you wouldn't have had any closure. And as I've also outlined, going forward, there will be closures for periodic maintenance. So I think it's very difficult to say you wouldn't have had this closure at all because there's accumulation of a number of factors from the corrosion that we're speaking about and some of the water egress. But there's also ongoing just plant replacement because it's become to the end of its useful life. So you can't really separate one from the other. And this period of closure is an accumulation of all that together. So it's difficult to say you wouldn't have had a closure. And I think it's probably also reasonable to assume that a leisure centre of this period of life, that we're at, what, eight years now, possibly would have had a closure before now, but not necessarily of the period that we've got to endure going forward.
Well, I think that was the point I was, I think that was the point I was trying to make. I appreciate there needs to be closures for maintenance works. But perhaps if there had been closures earlier in the period to do maintenance works, we wouldn't be looking at a 45-week closure this time.
Good. Thank you. I think it's such an important topic. I think we'll just keep going if that's okay. Councillor Mara.
Thanks, Convena. I mean, the first one is a point of clarity. I mean, what I heard Mr Martin say was 45 weeks from the point that we approved the report in the first quarter of next year. Now, to me then, that we're looking at certainly into 2023 after the 45 weeks. And also, we've already had nine weeks of closure and we have the distance between now and then. So it's not a 45-week closure. It's well in excess of 60 weeks of closure. So, you know, I mean, let's be clear. So, I mean, if that's a point of clarity, really, that I was looking for from Mr Martin, maybe I picked him up wrongly, but he said 45 weeks from the point of passing the remedial report. I have a question then to Mrs Dobie, if that's okay. I mean, does Olympia run at a profit and does it subsidise other services in Leisure and Culture Dundee? And if I can, Convena, maybe come back once I get an answer to that question.
Yeah, I can just make it firstly say that Mr Martin did say what you said, but based on the fact that the tender came in and depending what the tender required. So I think even the 45, we don't know whether it'd be less or more. It's speculative. Time scale, I would think, at the moment, until we actually get more detail from the actual investigations that are going to be done for the tendering process. And I think, Neil, do you agree with that?
Thanks, Convena, yes. But I think the point, I think, that councillor Mara is making is is if you then add on the closure that we've had to date, and I think in recognition, I could have been clearer in saying from when we've closed in October to now, plus the tendering process, plus the construction.
Okay, and so thanks on Neil. Judy, would you like to answer councillor Mara's question, please?
Thanks, Convena. Thanks, councillor Mara. The Olympia is one of Leisure and Culture's most successful venues in terms of income generation. And the money that's used does go to support services that we deliver. So it is, you know, obviously concerning to Leisure and Culture to have this building closed.
Okay, thanks, Convena, if I can. So, I mean, that's what I took from the answer to the first part was, you know, we are looking at over 65 weeks of closure in total, by my estimate, as a minimum. And, I mean, that's, I think, for us as councillors to be almost, I think, part of the narrative in this seems to be like that would, could be an expected thing to happen, you know, when you add up some of these things. I mean, the idea of you open a building and eight years later, you have to shut it for 65 weeks, to me, says that there was something seriously wrong in terms of either the way this was designed or the way that it's been built. I mean, it's, to me, it beggars belief that we might be expected to think that that was a reasonable position. I don't doubt that officers are trying to do the right thing to fix it, you know, right now and putting in place that process. But this is totally intolerable. On Miss Dobie's question, what, have you done an estimate, Judy, on what the impact on the Leisure and Culture Dundee budget is going to be? And how many staff currently do you have to redeploy as a result of this, who won't have any revenue to pay their wages? Because I think we have to be very careful that we safeguard the other services within Leisure and Culture to make sure that they do not suffer from, as a result of this massive black hole that emerges. um, suffer from as a result of this massive black hole that emergences emerges from a sixty five week plus closure of a profit bearing facility.
And thank you. There there are fifty two members of staff that are employed at Olympia Olympia, and that's in terms of the pool, but also the gym facilities. Now, the gym and the activity room are still operational at this moment in time. So the only closure that we we have up to now um, is in terms of the pools. Um, so those staff are still obviously employed. Um, ac- across the organisation, we've got a number of pools and a number of um, vacancies. And we are looking at working with unions and with staff to identify um, where those staff would be allocated to go in terms of of vacancies that we have, and also working um, with Dundee City Council to to look at um, redefining where people are working for this period. Um, as as you're probably aware, leisure and culture follows the the same terms and conditions as as Dundee City Council. Um, so we have a no redundancy um, arrangement. And we've had already um, a couple of meetings um, with the the staff involved to start those those talks about what what happens over the 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 coming months.
Thanks very much, Judy. I think, Counselor Mara, if you read my actual amendment, you obviously see you're probably going to support it based on what you've just said there. Uh, Mr. Presswood, would you like to come in as well, I see?
Yeah, I think just to to pick up Counselor Mara's point and highlight that within the financial implications, we do recognise that there will be considerable revenue implications, saying that the health of those and with obviously significant input from leisure and culture Dundee will be included in the next tender which will come back to committee.
Okay, Counselor Richardson, please.
Thanks, Kevina. Um, my questions have largely been answered and I I do welcome the fact that Judy said that um, she would be, um, she's been speaking to the schools and looking to to get some swimming up and running in the schools when it's when it's available. Um, you also mentioned Locky Pool and um, I was, I thought that was actually closed, but um, maybe maybe I'm wrong.
Um, thanks, Counselor.
The report came through the committee a while ago and I'll I'll pass on to Neil, if that's okay, to just explain that report.
Thanks, Kevina. Yes, members recently approved the report for the floor replacement at Locky Swimming Pool. So the works are currently on site as as it stands. And and the reason we've progressed this is obviously to to get them carried out and take that risk out of the way to hopefully have continuity for Locky Swimming Pool being open and not having any disruption going forward. And that will allow um, Judy to liaise and work with her staff to fully timetable the swimming pool in Locky.
Thank you. Judy, anything to add?
No, I'm I'm sorry for interrupting early. I was just going to confirm what Neil had said about the closure.
Yeah, could I make a comment? Could I make a comment, please? Could I make a comment? Um,
Yes, please.
I'm very, very sad to see that this, um, you know, um, real asset to the city is is now in such a state. And it's particularly worrying because last summer in Scotland, there were numerous deaths uh, with people doing unsafe swimming all over the country during the heatwave. Um, I think it's imperative that this work is carried out as quickly and as safely as possible to make sure that we can provide safe swimming facilities for all the people in Dundee as soon as we can.
I can assure you, once the tender comes through, that that will be the priority to make sure we have the Olympia opened up and it'd be a far better building than it is at currently. Uh, could we put, uh, Bailey Keenan, I think you had your amendment. I think you'd like to speak to it out of that stage, you know?
I think I've got a few other comments to make as well, Kevina. You know, I didn't attend the the briefing. And, you know, I didn't manage to fit in, or clashed with other things that I had in my diary, or I would have. And I think if I had have attended the briefing and heard some of the questions that I've heard this evening and the comments made, I might have well refreshed what the the most our motion is about. You know, I think we're hearing that we're going to bring in specialists, contractors, and they've still got to review certain things. Uh, and and we've got a tender, we're going out to tender for something we've taken an ester, a guest to make at the price, which may well go beyond that. And I think that, you know, we have got the right to identify things and and we should be trying to be open and transparent. I think our motion that I put forward for the Labour Group goes towards that. So I I'm making the recommendation to you on on our motion. And I'm hoping that you will see fit to support it. I'm looking to send the report as it stands to scrutiny. So as that we could obviously discuss with officer leisure and culture and the city council. I think that this whole episode has been pretty damning on leisure and culture when Dundee City Council should be taking the responsibility for a building that they own. And it's unfair on the directors of leisure and culture to take the level of grief that they have. Uh, and it seems to be pointing the finger in the finger in the direction of leisure and culture where we maintain that building, or should be. Uh, given the the number of issues, I would hope to see the correspondence. And I'm sort of led to believe that that there would have been, there's condition reports that no doubt could come forward uh, for scrutiny to have a look at as well. So as that we can establish it that very early, or or should we establish as to whether there should have been an intervention made earlier. We're on a mi- a risk management system in council. And perhaps officers should have been flagging the issues a lot earlier to councillors rather than a a three and a half, four million or plus bill coming in our direction. So it's really important that we do that. And I think that, uh, you know, to establish whether we've heard tonight that there is a potential, I think, uh, Bailey McPherson mentioned it, where the chemical blast might affect drinks or the chemicals that go in. But the thing operates in a very damp, moist, hot, wet environment. And and things don't appear to be man enough or, uh, you know, substantial enough to 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 stand the test of time. You know, lights falling down uh, i- is is a ridiculous position that we get ourselves in if we haven't expect inspected enough to make sure that there was corrosion there and identify that and address it at an early stage, then we've got a real problem. And, you know, this building has given endless grief, whether that's anecdotally or otherwise. There's always somebody complaining about the condition of that building. We need to address it once and for all. When it was built, I can recall that we had an issue with the ramp, and I believe the ramp would have been in in the car park that was there where we spent a fortune to holla out and redo it. Because the architect didn't get that right. What else did they know get right in relation to this building? So that needs to be established. So hence the reason I'm asking you to support in the in the interests of openness and transparency. In a council that's cash strapped, we're kind of take week after week or another report coming forward saying, here's another blunder. We need to spend a fortune. We need to address it once and for all. And this gives you the opportunity to gather up that information and address it once and for all. Uh, you know, and if there's other issues that are existing within council that officers are talking about and have done for the last year now, maybe, as could be the case in this, then they need to bring some of these things forward to councillors now. And no just expect that there's a paper arrives, we'll give you a brief in a week later. And try not to give you too many questions uh, at a public meeting. Frankly, that's no good enough. So in the interest of openness and transparency, I hope that you could see fit, Kevina, to support the motion that I've put forward.
I'll bring in Counselor McCready, who wants to second you?
Yes, thank you very much, Kevina. Um, I'm very concerned about yet another problem with the building. And I think there is a pattern emerging, and that is very, very worrying for this council. There's also a trend emerging in how these issues are dealt with. There is at first a lack of transparency and openness, perhaps even a hope that a problem will somehow magically disappear if people aren't told about it. So and we get contrite apologies from officers and indeed from elected representatives. And they're a welcome change from the backslap slapping self congratulation of which Dundee City Council is so fond. But we need to get to the bottom of problems. There are problems here that we need solved for the people of Dundee. Surely, uh, elected members and officers knew about this and should have been telling uh, councillors more broadly about it a very long time ago. When the Olympia was being built, I was on the project board. When I asked why there were not more local workers on this contract, time after time, I was told that we needed to use a specialist swimming pool contractor. I do wonder how that worked out. Also, Kevina, I mean, you said at the start that you were you were concerned about people asking questions that they should have asked at a private uh, meeting. And I welcome, to some extent, I do welcome that you've you've seen that the 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 paper, the the that you that you allowed to come forward on the agenda does not go far enough. I I that that's a welcome admission from you, Kevina. But I would say to you, that the time for you to add amendments to the recommendations was at the convener's meeting. You agreed before these reports were put out that this was the policy of the administration. That's what happened. Now you're trying to change it. And what you're trying to change it to does not go far enough, because I would say that in fact, the amendment you've put forward is slightly pointless, because I would say Mr. Many told us a few minutes ago that he has delegated powers to do what is outlined in that amendment, so it's a bit superfluous. This building has been operational for eight years. We need to know how the council has got to a situation where it now needs to shut for over a year. We also need to work out how that could possibly be the least damaging time for it to shut. As the executive director suggested, was the optimum time to shut the building? We need to know that whatever lessons need to be learnt are being learnt. I would like officers and members of the administration to take a step back and ask themselves how they think the opposition councillors and indeed the public of Dundee can have trust that there are not more problems out there when we look at the recent events around the roofs and around the Olympia. We can all accept that the Olympia is one of the most challenging environments that the council operates a building in. We need to know that all appropriate maintenance has been carried out over the operational lifetime of this building. And I think we've heard tonight that that's not been the case. And it would be ridiculous if attempts to save money in the face of Westminster and Holyrood austerity have saddled the people of Dundee with a larger bill. And whilst the focus tonight has been on the building, we do need to remember, Bailey McPherson mentioned them, you know, many of us will have seen the Dundee City Aquatics. But we do need to remember that whilst this building is closed, there are people out there who are not learning to swim. There are people not making progress as swimmers, whether as recreational swimmers or as competitive swimmers. And there are may, there may well be very, very many people who do not return when the pool reopens. This is a missed opportunity. This is a cost that we cannot measure in pounds and pence. But it is a heavy price to pay for those involved, and we owe them a full exploration of what has gone wrong. We need a full investigation into the problems at the Olympia. We need openness and transparency. That's why the scrutiny committee should look at this in greater detail. And it's why there needs to be an independent report that looks at what went wrong here and gives the council the opportunity to learn lessons. We need to be confident that lessons that need to be learned have been learnt. We can't just hope for the best. We need to be confident that lessons have been learnt. And we need to be confident that there has been full openness and transparency. So on that basis, I'm happy to second the amendment in Bailey Keenan's name. And I hope that the committee will also support that. Thank you very much, Kevina.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Bailey Keenan, as well for your contributions. I think there should be a few points here with regards to the implications of what you're trying to say. We can change amend reports as much as yourselves. And I think I felt this amendment was actually right for this report on the night. And I think it's important we actually do this. We what, we are open and transparent. I think your accusation of we're not is really were questionable, to say the least. And you were going to, you touched on a couple of things you've said about not learning to swim. I think Judy's made it clear that the other facilities within the city will be made available. And they will do their utmost to try and make sure the clubs, et cetera, and the swimmers will learn to swim. So I think that's a bit of a distraction in many, many ways. And I think go back to the tendering process. I think Bailey Keenan was concerned about the tendering process. I think Mr. Martin will make sure that tender document comes back to the committee as soon as it possibly can and as quick as we possibly can get it to you, so you can actually see what needs to be done and in detail. So we actually see with the full uh, costs from that project as it goes ahead. I wasn't here when the the building was put up, so your comments with regards to what you said in the early days, I have no idea, no input on that at all. But I think the local workers one, I think there's another one of a distraction. I think you probably find there's more local contractors than you're probably seeing. And I think, again, go back to openness and transparency, there will be, and I can assure you of that. Uh, as for your Bailey Keenan's amendment, I think I'm quite happy to mine forward, quite simply, because you've touched on it yourselves on either Bailey Keenan and Counselor McCready. The scrutiny committee can call this at any time at any other report. And so you're welcome to do that as a convener, Bailey Keenan, and I'm sure you will. And I think you can actually take that with you and take that thought where you want to take that to committee. And the question of bringing reports and and communications, again, I I believe that's within the remit of the scrutiny committee and the convener to choose to do that. So as an amendment, I don't think we really need that, because you have the power to do that if you choose. I think then the third point with regard to time scales, uh, I think I'd like to bring in Mr. Presswood on that. Because I think April twenty two for a proper and full report, which is what we're looking for, we're looking for an open and transparent report. But a detailed report on what's needing to be done and the causes behind it. And to allow the discussion with regards to the communications, which you've already mentioned. I think we really need to look at a reasonable timetable. But I think Mr. Presswood might have a better idea of how long that would probably take. And in mind, we'll come up to Christmas. So, Mr. Presswood, would you come in, please?
Kevina, many thanks. Um, first of all, I I think we acknowledge what every member has said about the importance of learning lessons from this. And I think um, the proposed appointment of a consultant, if committee is minded, uh, to support that uh, would be an important part of that um, process of learning lessons. As you see um, from within the report, we do propose retaining a special consultant to advise on um, the looking forward around maintenance uh, and the performance of the building uh, fabric. And I would advise that, in my opinion, concluding that review and reporting back to committee by April twenty twenty two would be extremely difficult. Officers will be focused very much on the key priority, and we've certainly taken that as a remit from uh, committee night to accelerate as far as possible the conclusion of the tender and bringing that tender back to committee. That should be the principal priority for officers. And I think um, to ask officers to 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 drop that in favour of preparing a brief for consultants, taking that to procurement and letting the consult, the consultancy exercise, and then providing background information to the uh, to to the consultants would be a mistake. From my point of view, the priority should be getting on site, getting the Olympia fixed and getting the facility reopened. I think at the point where we have the consultants, when we have the 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 contract let with the the construction partner, that would be the right time to start writing a brief for consultants um, to um, fully go into the the questions that have been raised and ensure that a a proper report can be brought back. I would anticipate that the timetable might well be um, appointing them immediately after the uh, the the appointment of the uh, the construction firm uh, with a three month timetable to turn that around, and then perhaps a month to to draft the committee reports. So by my reckoning, it would be early summer would be the earliest we could possibly uh, bring that report back.
Excuse me. Uh, Bailey Keenan, your point of order?
Kevina, I'm just a bit confused at where you're going with this. Uh, you know, you're saying that I've got the right to bring it to convener's meeting, which is fine. Uh, we could deal with that this evening as well, of course. Uh, seeing it's seen it's on this agenda. Uh, and the other thing is you're asking questions about the time scale. So are you minded to accept the third part of my motion? In which case, to make it easier, can we just agree the law? Uh, I'm happy to adjust that date, uh, if that suits best.
I'm just going to add clarity for the members, just to make sure they're aware of it with regards to them going forward. Uh, comes from Malone. Sorry, comes from Mara, sorry.
Kevina, I'm still a bit confused. What what you, what clarity are you bringing? Are you minded to support the motion that I put forward, having asked about the date? There is no date set on your motion that I can see. So so what are you looking to achieve by asking the officer to delay with this evening?
It's the other elected members to fully understand the motion going forward and propose, sorry. And my motion, which has not got a date on it, you're correct. Uh, I'm not minded to support your amendment. Um, I'm minded just to put mine forward. And we'll probably have a a vote on that. But Counselor Mara, I think, wants to come in as well.
That, thanks, Kevina. Um, I mean, I I find it slightly confusing. I mean, I think your your opposition to the amendment seems to be based on the fact that you think the scrutiny can scrutiny committee can look at this in any case. And that you're also open to having somebody and that you're also open to having somebody look into this externally. So the one bit that you're leaving out, by the looks to me, is the bit about openness and transparency, point E, which was that we want to see all correspondence published and put into the public domain. Now, there are significant concerns being put in the public. I've been hearing from people, you know, I was in a taxi this morning, it was raised with me, it's been raised with me time and again. I've had plenty of emails about this. You know, there have been calls from the press about openness and transparency on this issue. And I think it's just imperative that at this stage, given what's happened over recent weeks, whether that be in relation to the roof tiles and what's happened with that, this current situation, that we have full transparency and that this is put into the public domain. So I think that any opposition to this tonight is beyond me. The idea that we'd actually hold back that information from the public. So I would just urge you, convener, to do your best to accept this amendment and to actually be open with the public about what's going on here. That we're not seeing a bill, a smaller bill, through neglect or through kind of putting off necessary maintenance payments, that the taxpayer is now facing a much bigger bill years later. If that's not the case, then I would hope that those, these letters, this information that we're asking for can prove that to be the case. So I think we should be transparent and open and we should be put it in the public domain. And I think that this amendment does that.
I think the transparency and openness keeps getting repeated. I think when it goes to the scrutiny committee, that will be the case. I think the scrutiny committee will be able to actually pull the committees and the reports forward that we've been bringing in the communications. I don't think there'll be anything about that. And as for the speculation, I think I'd rather wait on seeing what the report comes back to this committee in the future date and fully details what the problems were and what the problems were behind and the causes behind that. And councillor Alexander.
Thanks very much, convener. I've got a few comments. And just to say, I think the report details a number of aspects, which we'll come back to committee for further scrutiny. I don't think there's any question, in my mind anyway, over the substance of what the report says. It talks about the fact that additional survey works will be carried out. It talks about the additional technical advice, talks about engaging with specialists. It talks about the fact that a further report will come back to City Development Committee. It is very clear in saying that elected members on this council will have final say on the tender document and for the information that comes forward. You've been very clear in your remarks. Your amendment sets out very clearly that there was a further review to take place that will come back to City Development Committee. As you've rightly said, there's an opportunity for scrutiny to also consider the contents of this report and any other report that it considers. So any suggestion of being complicit or hiding anything is absolute nonsense and very clear to any member of the public, I would suggest. There's a couple of things I think it's really important to reference. And I've been slightly concerned with some of the narrative that I've heard this evening from, you know, and I'm sure it wasn't intended in this way, but I heard Bailey Wright talking about her experience of raising questions at the time. I've heard of councillor McCready talking about his experience on the project board. I think it's also important to say that in the public narrative that I've seen in the press where there's talk of, not necessarily from those elected members, so I'm not suggesting that those elected members are saying anything in this regard, but talk of things being done on the cheap, et cetera. I think it's really important to remember that councillor McCready, you were convener at the committee where it was agreed that that site and location would be chosen and that that development would move forward. And councillor Bailey Keenan, you were leader of the council at the time. So I'm not making a political point, I'm merely seeking some clarity around the context of we're having a discussion. I think it's really important that we are all mindful of the fact that this was agreed unanimously. We've all had a role in this. Now, I wasn't on the council, but I accept that my party supported the principle of this site, et cetera. So I don't think we should be almost trying to push that off as, you know, I told you so. Because I think that's what I've been hearing ever so slightly. I think the other thing as well, councillor Mara talks about, you know, the profit and the amount of money that would be brought in by the Olympia. I think that's a really important point. But what wasn't referenced was the fact that, and he will know as a former board member, of course, that this is a partnership with leisure and culture Dundee and that the council will support and underwrite as part of our agreement the support that will, you know, be required as a result of this closure. So there is no black hole because it will be part of that partnership agreement, which is detailed and approved by council. So with all of that said, I think it's very clear that we're all asking for the same things. We all want answers as to how this arose, what the situation is, how much it will be and how quickly we can get the facility back open. We're all absolutely unanimous in that view that we want to be seen or to be open, I should say, as quickly as possible, safely and properly with everything done. There is no jibaiti, there is no question in my mind from anything that's been said tonight. I'll be supporting your amendment, convener, because I think, again, it adds another point in terms of that scrutiny and that ability for committee to consider it. And again, there'll be an opportunity for city development to consider the contents of that, which will be a public meeting, which will be available, recorded and published thereafter. So let's not be in any doubts what we're all seeing tonight. There are issues with the Olympia, they will get fixed, they will be hopefully approved tonight in order to start that process or kick that process certainly into fifth gear. And we want to get to a position where that facility is opened. So with that, I will close. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Alexander, and thank you for your comments. Willie, I think we can, or Roger, can we move to the vote? Can I get a second or first, please? Can you second it? Do I have a second of anyone else? Councillor Rome.
Thank you, convener. As I wrote earlier, I would like to formally second you. I won't take a long time because I think a lot has been said, so I don't want to re-go over a ground that's already been covered. Second your amendment simply because it's concise and it's clear and it's not prescriptive. And I think, I suppose the best description would be transparent. And I think councillor McCready mentioned a pattern earlier on, and I think the only pattern I see is amendments being put forward that are very complicated that then end up getting cut down. Whereas the amendment you're putting forward is extremely clear, extremely easy to understand. And I think everyone can get behind that. So and I hope that would be the case.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Many, can we just move for the vote, please?
Thank you, convener. For clarity, could I please confirm that the motion in the name of councillor Flynn, seconded by councillor Rome, is circulated? The amendment in the name of Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor McCready, is also circulated. I'll now pass over to Mr. Wardle to take the roll call vote. Thank you.
Thanks very much, convener. We're now proceeding to the vote. So I'll call your name and if you can indicate motion or amendment, please. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Rendell.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Saunders.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Cookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor McCready.
Amendment.
Councillor Macervin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Mara.
The amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
Councillor Hay.
Amendment.
Councillor Scott.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Councillor Murray.
Motion.
Councillor Ross.
Motion.
That's fifteen for the motion and thirteen for the amendment. The motion's carried.
Right, thank you.
Item eight, which is tender received and you're asked to accept overs as recommended.
Just if you can approve all for five tenders, expenditure £480,000 for works to various projects, health and safety services and maintenance contracts and demolition of the tennis pavilion at Wobbe Terrace, examples. Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convener. Just firstly, just to briefly welcome the restoration work of Winawtham Bridge, which was subject to some point appalling vandalism. And obviously, I've been in contact with officers over this since the occasion and they've made it plain to me that it's not a straightforward matter because it's a bridge of significant historic proportions. And it's important to get the correct skill set and also matching materials. But I'm very glad to see that this is coming forward. The other one of interest to me is the former tennis pavilion off the Esplanade in Drottiferry, which has obviously come to the end of the road and demolition is being proposed. And in a way, I'm glad about that because it's become something of a magnet of troublemaking and graffiti, et cetera, over recent, the last couple of two years or so. I'm a wee bit disappointed that actually it was allowed to get to this state of being beyond economic repair because there were a number of interests, expressions of interest that came to me from commercial people, charities and so forth. And although I think the time has come for it to go, it's just a wee bit of a pity that, you know, a council facility was allowed to get to that state of deterioration. So just looking and looking for the future, I'm just really wondering. And I know that nearby residents will certainly be wondering what the future of the wider site there holds.
Thank you. Robin, would you take on it, please?
Chair, many thanks. And just to pick up the point that councillor Duncan made about the condition of the building. I know that Neil's team have had some concern about it for a period of time. And we have, as councillor Duncan suggests, responded to a number of potential community uses. But over the past year, it's become clear that the condition of the building was such that it could not be saved and reused. In terms of the use of the cleared site, there is discussion ongoing with the director of neighbourhood services and her team to understand what the potential of that site is. And there'll be a report brought back to a future committee on that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much indeed, Mr. Presswood. And I'm just keen that, you know, nearby residents are included in these considerations.
Thank you. No further questions. So I'll take this report as read, as approved. Yep, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, convener. The remaining items of business are confidential and the committee wish to deal with these in the usual way.
We just accept it as the usual way, all approved? Yep. Okay, thank you very much. And that's the business for City Development.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Going to thank councillor Flynn for his fortitude in getting through committee because I know he's particularly unwell today. Okay, Tracy, move on.
The first item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in any item on the agenda?
Any declarations? I see none. Okay, thanks, Tracy.
That takes us on to item two, open data policy. You are asked to approve the policy and its implementation.
The report seeks approval for this open data policy as part of how the council delivers the objectives of the smart cities open data project in collaboration with the Scottish Cities Alliance. Is there any questions, comments on this? None? Okay, can I, oh, sorry, councillor Mara.
Thanks, convener. Just, are we working from a presumption that the data belonging to the public should be available to them? So if they've paid for something, you know, a bill for something, that they should be, have all kind of correspondence relating to that available to them?
Sorry, councillor Mara, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding your question. So the open data platform will be anonymized data, which will collate various strands of information. So for example, it might well be on traffic movements, which will be anonymized data, or it could be on CO2 emissions from particular roads, for example, and collated in that sense. So I'm not quite grasping your question. That might be me rather than your question, so forgive me.
I think it's just a point of general principle, convener. I'll leave it for the moment. I'll maybe put it in writing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Short.
I just would like to welcome this report. I'm a bit of a geek sometimes and I love looking up the public art that we have. And many of us maybe would have seen the other day, there was a public art documentary about the new towns. But I also think it's really inspiring that we have so much public art. And if you want to find it, then you can find it on the open data. However, in addition to that, I'm working with some of the senior role at the Morgan on a little project and the open data with regards to certain aspects of that project has been sent over. And it's a really good starting point for us. So I, as I say, am a bit of a geek and I have attended a couple of the open data jams a couple of times at Aberdeen. And it's just wonderful what can actually be done with this data when it's been harvested and used to really good public use. So really excited to see it being added to all the time. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Short. I don't think I've ever called you a geek, but perhaps I should start. Thanks for your comment. Any other questions, comments on this? No? Can I take that as agreed? Thank you very much. Tracy.
Item three, Dundee's UNESCO City of Design designation. You are asked to note progress and agree support funding.
I think we all have a real sense of pride in our UNESCO designation as the only UK city of design, continuing to be the only UK city of design, I should say, despite the recent increase in the UNESCO designations across the world. The team do a fantastic job and that is detailed within the report. I think, again, it comes through many of the other aspects of our work. It is also an important badge of honour in terms of the promotion of the city internationally. And again, I'm very pleased to see this report come forward to continue to support it over the next few years. Are there any questions or comments on this? No? Okay, can I take this as, oh, sorry, councillor Short? Can I, can I make a request of members? Can we use the chat function? Because sometimes I struggle to go onto the screen with the thumbs up. Thank you.
Sorry. I just wanted to, again, welcome this. I'm sure many of us have seen across our wards some of the work that's been done in collaboration with the team at the UNESCO City of Design, from painted roads to, I believe, other wards having street art and things. And it's really good to have them there to bring something a wee bit special to the streets right across the city. So I do definitely welcome this and feel that they're home where they are now. Within the Scottish Museum of Design is also, I think, very relevant as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much for those comments. I see no others, so can this be agreed? Thank you very much. Tracy.
Item four, revenue monitoring for 2021, 2022. You have a report before you.
Yeah, standard reports. I'll just bring in questions straight away. So I think Bailey McPherson, you were first.
Thanks, convener. My question's really around the underspend in neighbourhood services, something I've raised in the past. And I've raised it particularly in relation to staff slippage due to the level of unfilled posts. Now, I've heard assurances at previous committees that every effort, I don't doubt that that is the case, that every effort is being made to tackle this. However, if you look into the body of the reasons for the variances, if you go to page 27, appendix B, it actually indicates that the staff underspend has actually increased between the 30th of September and the 31st of October. But it's relatively marginal at 20K. Marginal, I would say, in relation to a 1.16, 1.116 rather, million pound overspend, underspend, rather. But I'd be just grateful if officers can give an explanation as to why it's heading, albeit in a small way in the wrong direction. And if there is some indication as to when, we will get to a position where the unfilled posts are no longer unfilled.
Thanks very much for the question. Can I pass over to the exec director, Eileen?
Thank you, convener, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. Just to reassure you, the recruitment process has been undertaken and we are now in the position now where we've offered out those posts and we're just waiting on acceptances coming back. So we should start to see that figure coming down as we complete the recruitment process. We've had a number of vacancies over the period as well. So that modest uptick has been in relation to vacancies across neighbourhood services, just in terms of timing. just in terms of timing of people leaving posts and recruitment into them. But the environment posts are well underway for filling those posts.
That's helpful to know and I look forward to seeing progress in further revenue monitoring reports going forward, thank you.
Thanks very much, Bailey MacPherson. Councillor McCready.
Thanks very much, convener. Can I draw attention to page 22 and paragraph 6.6? Where city development department is projecting a breakeven mainly due to current level of unfilled posts in architectural and engineer services. And I think that's something of the order of £450,000 that's been saved by those unfilled posts, according to the report. And given the reports that we've received in recent weeks and indeed the report we just discussed, is this a wise area to have an underspend and to have staff slippage? And would you have been able to agree to Bailey Keenan's motion, or amendment rather, in the previous committee if all these posts had been filled?
So I'll bring in the executive director in a moment, but just to answer your question directly, I think you drawing conclusions with the other two items that you've just referenced and this item is, you know, actually is a red herring. And clearly, when we've got issues where we have vacancies or underspend in terms of staff budget, there are other reasons for that which aren't always detailed in the report. But I will bring in the executive director to add a little bit of context around 6.6 and what it means from a departmental service delivery point of view. So can I bring in Robin, please?
Chair, many thanks. The non-filling of vacancies is partly a conscious strategy and partly response to current market conditions. And I'm sure elected members will be aware that particularly due to COVID, people are perhaps reluctant to change jobs. And it has become more challenging for us to recruit staff in some disciplines. In terms of the two specific areas, which isn't the totality of the underspend on staffing, there would be a combination of factors here. But typically, we may be seeking to hold vacancies until such time as there is an adequate fee generating workload for those positions to bring forward. And because fees have reduced as a result of the pandemic, it has in part been a conscious strategy that those posts will be filled as soon as the workload exists to support them. And finally, to pick up the point raised by councillor McCready, these types of posts would not be the type of post that would be providing advice on condition survey or responding to the types of issues that councillor McCready has raised.
Thanks, Robin. Councillor McCready, do you have a supplemental?
Yeah, 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 I mean, I hear what Mr. Presswood said and I hear what you said. But is it not the case that if posts are budgeted for, they should be filled or do we not bother with the budget anymore in this council?
Well, you know that to not be the case, we have a budget which we do follow. And I think it's very clear from the updates that we get at every single policy and resources committee that there is the ability to scrutinize and challenge and question every aspect of the budget as you're doing right now, councillor McCready. So if you have concerns, I'm sure officers would be happy to listen to them either during the course of meetings like this or out with, if there are specific questions around that. I think Bailey Keenan, you were next. Convener. Oh, no, you weren't, sorry, apologies, Bailey Keenan, you weren't next, that was me jumping the gun. Councillor Mara.
Thanks, convener. I just noting the underspend in children and families. Obviously, there's a bit of narrative there in terms of that underspend in early years. I just wonder if the executive director would like to comment in terms of how he sees the management of that budget going for the rest of the year and how that money will be applied.
Thanks councillor Mara for not letting him off the handle too easily with these. Perhaps last question as executive director during committee at least, Paul.
I've got a couple more, but.
Right, good.
I'm not surprised councillor Mara, very happy to try and answer that as best I can. I think we'd all be aware that we were dealt with quite generously in terms of revenue with the 11.40 early years. But there was a slight shortfall in the capital, but we had more in revenue. So I think we actually had quite a generous allocation of revenue to start with. But the main reason for the underspend is that the late openings of the two new buildings, which were delayed due to COVID. So the staff didn't start, they didn't, they've not been involved for a whole academic session, just a part session. And so we would be anticipating that next session with these two early year centres being open for the full year, that will actually take up a significant amount of that money. And it may very well be that the numbers will rise. There's also the possibility that the rate will need to increase because that's currently a issue probably not being reviewed nationally. So I would see that that's what's going to happen. I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be, but I think it will certainly take up quite a lot of that current underspend, it's here councillor Mara.
Thanks very much. Michael, did you want to come back?
No, I'll leave it at that, thanks, Paul.
Thanks very much. Bailey Keenan, sorry, it is you now.
Convener, just sort of following on from the sort of question that councillor McCready was asking. And, you know, we heard getting a lot of questions from members of the public around, you know, who's responsible or how did such an error like the roofs happen? And, you know, asking whether were the shortage in architectural services or posts not filled in architectural service or if neighbourhood services are carrying, you know, a staff reduction. You know, these are departments that people would expect someone that was meant to be monitoring changes in legislation to be sitting within. So, I mean, these questions are quite good to ask and asked openly. And I'm just wondering whether, given that that was a question that was asked at the previous meeting, whether our officers are any closer to identifying whether we had an individual that used to deal with that, that no longer sits within a department anymore, hence the reason it was missed anyway. So were any further forward with addressing the issues that led to the roof problem? You know, that we could be answered now.
So Bailey Keenan, a couple of points. First of all, this is not a report on the roofs, this is a report on the finances of the council in terms of an update on the revenue budget. And your question doesn't relate to that, so it isn't relevant in that context. However, the other thing is, we've just recently discussed that and agreed to a full overview and review and assessment and investigation, whatever words you want to use, into that situation, which we want to come back as quickly as possible that sets that detail out. So I think we need to wait for that work to be undertaken so that we can be assured and reassured that the lessons have been learned, but also that we've identified any points of failure. So on that basis, I think that goes to answering your question. And if you want to pick up the point specifically on the question that you asked, then I'm sure officers would be happy to do so after the meeting as well. But do you have any questions on the report before us?
Another question in relation to staff slippage then. Is that having any bearing effect on the fact that some of our gyms within community centres are not managing to open despite having spent a lot of money themselves on rearranging equipment so as that they can socially distance?
In terms of community staff, do you mean with the neighbourhood services?
And the gym in the Adler Community Centre, I've had correspondents saying they can't open, they've spent seven grand of their own money rearranging the equipment. And just wondering how, as an open, is it down to staff? Vacancies not being filled or what's the bigger issue?
Thanks for the question. So this was something that was raised with all, I think, the ward members in terms of situations specific to Adler. And I've been in dialogue as is my colleague councillor Hunter with Marie Daly in terms of communities who unfortunately isn't on the call. But my understanding is it isn't directly related to staffing solely. And there's a number of issues and COVID, of course, and the current situation with the new variant also at the forefront of people's minds. It's a very specific question which, given that Marie is not on the call, I think is probably most appropriate to take offline. But I will just invite Elaine as the executive director, if she has anything she can add at this point or if not, if she can follow up after the meeting. Elaine.
Thank you councillor Alexander. I'm more than happy to take that question away and discuss it with Marie and give a full update back to Bailey Keenan and the rest of committee.
Thanks very much for that. Okay, I see no other questions on this, so can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Tracy.
That takes us on to item five on the agenda, capital expenditure monitoring for 2021, 2022. You are asked to note the latest position.
Again, just a further update on the last capital revenue, sorry, capital monitoring report. Any questions on this? No? Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Tracy, back to you.
So item six is the financial outlook and revenue budget for 2022, 2023.
Thanks very much. This is a factual report setting out some of the financial context and considerations for us as a council and I suppose for all councils across the whole of these lands. It is, of course, before any budgets have been set and I'm very conscious of the fact that we'll hear more detail over the next week or two from the Scottish government setting out their proposals for the forthcoming budget as well. So certainly a guide rather than set in any shape or form in stone. Is there any questions specifically on this? Okay. No, okay, can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Tracy.
So item seven is the treasury management activity 2021, 2022 mid-year review. Again, this report is for noting.
Self-explanatory, I think, shows that treasury management activity at mid-year was maintained with the prudential code limits and a saving of around 3.2 million against the budget provision for capital financing costs, which is obviously something to be welcomed. Any questions on this? No? Can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Tracy.
Okay, so item eight is the annual procurement report and community benefits update. You have a report before you.
This report provides an update on the work of the corporate procurement team in 2020, 2021. And that continues to deliver savings for the council and partner organisations. Of course, the report has also been updated to include the community benefits and the recent report that we considered that P and R, I think, showed the commitment of the council to explore every avenue to make and maximize the opportunities that stem from our procurement exercises. And I think this report really sets out or gives a flavour of the range of activities, the benefits that have been derived from that in terms of direct employment, but also indirect employment and investment in local companies as well. So I think in that basis, it is good and to be commended, but there is always more that we can do. Are there any questions on this report? No? Can this be agreed? Thank you very much.
That takes us on to the final item on the agenda, which is in the confidential part. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual manner?
Can we agree this in the usual way? Okay, I see no dissension, so thank you very much. That is all of the business. Good evening, have a wonderful December if I don't see all of you, have a happy Christmas and a very merry new year as well. Thank you, take care everyone, cheers.
Thank you.